Good evening. Time being five thirty. Welcome to everyone. My name is Paula Reet, Mayor of Kingborough. It's my pleasure to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting on Monday the fifth of June twenty twenty three. Welcome to our member of the public who's in the gallery this evening and also to the many people who are watching at home via YouTube. Being five thirty PM, I now officially declare the meeting open. I wish to advise that council meetings are recorded and made publicly available on our website. And in accordance with council's policy, I'll ask the general manager to confirm that the audio recording has commenced.
Confirm, ma'am.
Thank you. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Our attendees this evening are myself, councillor Reet, deputy mayor councillor Gladright, councillor Antoly, councillor Bain, councillor Cordova, councillor Dean, councillor Fox, councillor Midgley, councillor Richardson, and councillor Street. From our staff this evening, we have the general manager, Mr Arnold, director of engineering services, Mr Reeve, director of environment development and community services, Dr Fox, the acting director of governance, recreation and property services, Mr Basham, our media and communications advisor, Ms Adams, and our executive assistant, Mrs Morton. Our apologies this evening. We don't have any apologies. Before we move to page one and the confirmation of the minutes, I just wanted to share two brief things. Firstly, a shout out to Calvin Christian School. The deputy mayor and I had some students visit us last Wednesday. They were very, very well behaved and they came and sat in the chamber and we did a mock debate. And the topic was that cats should be contained within properties. And they came up with some really good arguments and voted overwhelmingly, actually, the two groups that they should, cats should be contained on people's properties. So I said to them that we would be on tonight and how well behaved they were and that they had set the standard for councillors. So thank you to those students if you are watching. It was certainly a pleasure for us to host you here. I also, before we start tonight, I did want to take a moment to pay tribute to a former long-serving staff member, Mr John Doole, who passed away a fortnight ago. John was very much loved at Kingborough Council, where he worked for over thirty-five years. He first started with council in nineteen eighty-two as a health surveyor, a role he held until nineteen eighty-seven. What was significant about him working here during that time is I understand that that's where he met his future wife and, and love of his life, Deb, who also worked here at council at that time. And after a brief, very stint living interstate in Geelong, John and Deb returned to Kingston and John started in nineteen ninety-three as council's senior environmental health officer. In two thousand and six, he took on the role of manager of environmental services, and that was a job that he held until his retirement in September of last year. John's contribution during his time at council was significant. He was a climate change champion and he worked tirelessly to ensure that Kingborough was really at the forefront of, of, of climate change, identifying our municipalities' issues, and importantly, adaptation and mitigation strategies. His work was recognised in this area, not only throughout the state but nationally. And when he retired last year, I talked about this significant contribution. Of course, ever humble, John mentioned that it was all part of teamwork. But there is no doubt that he was the driving force behind this work. John's work meant he dealt with so many council staff across various departments and his colleagues became his friends. He became a great mentor and, and friend to his close-knit staff in the environmental services team. And I know that they are feeling his loss particularly at the moment and like his family will continue to do that into the future. Last Monday, there was a celebration of John's life at the Twin Ovals. It was a beautiful service and it was literally standing room only as family, friends, colleagues, former colleagues and community members came to pay tribute to John. And I actually don't think he would have believed how many people attended. There were heartfelt speeches from his wife, Deb, daughter M, and son Jake. With permission from the family, I wanted to relay a quote from John that they shared at the service. I preface this so that those who perhaps didn't know John understand that he had a very dry and quick sense of humour. He would always make you laugh and often he would make jokes at his own expense. The family shared the story of what John said when the surgeon relayed the news to them that the brain tumour that he had been diagnosed with couldn't be operated on. Apparently, the surgeon said that if they did operate, that due to its location, surgery would likely result in John becoming a vegetable. Obviously, very, very confronting news. But never one to miss a beat, straight away, John's response was something along the lines of, 'Well, if I become a vegetable, I might have a new career on council.' So, on behalf of the Kingborough Council and the wider community, I would like to convey our heartfelt sympathies and love to Deb, to M and to Jake, and to all their colleagues, past and present, and their friends. Their loss is immense, but I would hope they know how much he was admired and loved by everyone here at council. And given his sense of humour, I'm sure that he wouldn't mind if I finished with a quote from none other than A.A. Milne, who in Winnie the Pooh said, because I think this sums up how many feel about John's passing, 'How lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard.' So, veil, John. If we move now to page one, confirmation of minutes. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder that the minutes of the open session of council meeting number nine, held on the fifteenth of May twenty twenty-three, be confirmed as a true record. I have a mover in the deputy mayor and a seconder in councillor Bain. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against, motion is carried. Still on page one, workshops held since the last council meeting. We had a workshop last Monday night, the twenty-ninth of May, in relation, relation to the budget. Turning to page two, declarations of interest. Does any councillor have a declaration they would like to declare? No, thank you. Transfer of agenda items. Is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from open into closed session or closed into open session? No, thank you. Questions without notice from the public? Does any member of the public wish to ask a question without notice? Thank you. If you'd like to come to the lectern and just, even though we know it, if you could please, for the record, state your name and suburb. Thank you.
Charles, Charles Biggins, Lesley Vale. Questions regarding a possible future Kingborough bushfire inquiry. My questions this evening relate to council's past, present and future actions regarding bushfire mitigation and following up on questions that I put to council in November last year. Number one, Kingborough Council receives an annual TFS report regarding the bushfire risk for the municipality. For some reason, these reports are not released to the public. But a, a, a report was released by the State Fire Board after the twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen fourteen Dunaley and Collins Vale fires. And it showed that the entire municipality was an extreme fire risk. For the record, what efforts have been made by council to gain permission from TFS to release to the public the information contained in those annual reports?
The general manager.
Through you, mayor. Thank you. Mr Biggins, we'll have to take that question on notice so that we can provide a detailed response.
Thank you. On a total, on a total fire ban day, a landowner can build a bonfire in their front yard and there is little the fire service can do about it. Only the council has the authority to issue a fire abatement notice to reduce or remove a fire hazard before it is lit. Kingborough collectively has been building a bonfire since nineteen sixty-seven. And emergency services can only work with what they are given on the day. Why has it been allowed to get this bad? Why hasn't the council exercised its authority to abate this hazard to a level that emergency services can effectively work with?
We'll have to take that one on notice as well, please.
Sure. Three, strategic bushfire mitigation work is critical to the survival of people, property and the environment. Regardless of which map or report you read, we don't have any safe emergency exit paths from this municipality. Creating a bushfire hazard protection zone along the entire length of the road network is exactly the kind of work that council should be engaged in. For the record, has council applied for grant funding to restore the municipality's road infrastructure and associated vegetation management to a level that emergency services can operate in?
General manager.
Through you, mayor. Mr Biggins, council annually applies for grant funds in relation to council's road network. And that also involves on an annual basis consideration in council's budget process in terms of the maintenance that's undertaken on the council-owned roads. You'll be aware that many of the major roads throughout a municipality are in fact state-owned. And that is a matter that is not one that council can get involved in.
Mr Biggins.
Okay, then I'll refer to the, your recent roadside vegetation report commissioned from a grant, a fifteen thousand dollar grant to Melbourne University, which highlighted thirty-five kilometres of extreme fire risk. So I'm assuming that normal, normal budgetary requirements is not going to abate that thirty-five kilometres. So quite specifically, is council going to address that thirty-five kilometres in, over a period of many years? Or is a, you know, a special grant, perhaps, application to address that thirty-five kilometres that was identified in the report that you commissioned?
General manager indicates we'll take that on notice.
Okay. In twenty twenty, the state government presented the Bushfire Mitigation Bill to parliament. This bill would have effectively removed from council most of the responsibilities I've highlighted this evening and placed it in the hands of a panel chaired by the Fire Commission. The local government association was particularly critical of the twenty twenty bill, which led in part to its withdrawal from parliament. For the record, was Kingborough Council also critical of the state government bushfire mitigation bill?
I can't recall that. Perhaps the general manager could assist.
Through you, mayor. I don't recall the council forming a position on that. But that said, I will take your question on notice just to confirm that.
Leaving early is the new catchphrase being promoted by the National Emergency Management Agency. Down through state emergency services and through to Sparking Conversations' community programme. For the people of Kingborough, living in the state's most fire-prone municipality with no safe exit paths, leaving earlier and earlier is set to become the new normal. For the record, does council have the resources to fulfil its responsibilities regarding earlier, more widespread and frequent evacuation events throughout the municipality?
General manager.
Through you, mayor. Mr Biggins, council is aware of its emergency management response role. It is not the prime fighting agency in this state. That is the Tasmanian Fire Service. Council works with the Tasmanian Fire Service to educate and encourage residents of Kingborough, which is a bushfire-prone area, to have a fire plan and to take notice of the TFS advice.
In the event of an evacuation, what is the council's responsibility?
General manager.
Through you, mayor. The council is a recovery agency under the Emergency Management Act. And in the event of a bushfire, I would take direction from the commissioner of the fire service. Or with the proposed changes implemented at the state level, the police commissioner.
At the very, at the very least, blocking roads is, is part of that. And manning, manning blocked roads. Anyway. My final question, what effect has Kingborough Council's Protection Code overlays its biodiversity offset policy set to exceed eighty-one thousand dollars per hectare, the restrictive rezoning of twenty thousand hectares of private land as land conservation, and the proposed introduction of a Trees on Private Land bylaw had, has had and will have on the build-up of heavy vegetation fuel loads across the municipality? For the record, what will council's defence be at an inquiry when landowners who believe that planning decisions, decisions that prioritise environment above people has contributed, contributed to their losses?
General manager.
Through you, ma'am. Thank you for the question, Mr Biggins. We'll take that one on notice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no further questions. We'll continue on page two. Questions on notice from the public. We had a number. The first one was from Ms Landon in relation to policy consultation with an officer response from Dr Fox. Second one in relation to a flagpole at Alona Service Centre from Ms Price with an officer response from Dr Fox. And the final one in relation to roadwork completion and business hardship from Mr Lanell and an officer's response from Mr Arnold. If members of the public do wish to submit a question on notice, you can do so by completing the relevant form on council's website or also by emailing us at ksc@kingborough.taz.gov.au. Turning now to page thirteen, questions without notice from councillors. Does any councillor have a question without notice? Councillor Antoly, then councillor Cordova, then the deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. With regards to the double yellow lines or the yellow line markings on Auburn Road, on the corner there to stop cars from parking, locals have approached me to say that apparently after hours, some of the more cheeky locals are parking there in the dark. And I have to admit, I actually almost came a cropper with a car while trying to dodge a little paddy melon that was parked on that spot. So what would be the normal procedure for locals that were concerned about that? What should they do about it?
Mr Reeve, could you assist us with that?
Through you, mayor. So if it's after hours, the best thing is to call the police so they can actually, they can actually go down and check. If it continues, as a continuing process, it'd be something we would like to know about anyway because we can potentially do some of our own checks as well at the same time. Or I guess write some more correspondence out to the residents if it is the residents that are actually parking there.
Is it worth their while maybe taking a photo of the vehicle's regio and sending that to council to follow up on?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, ma'am. My question is about arts and culture, particularly in Kingston Park, but it's kind of in two questions. So the first question is about the talent show, the recent talent show, which was a huge success. It was fantastic. I went down there, really enjoyed it. I know a number of other people here were there as well and it was fantastic. So the question is really, will that continue? And how are we thinking about employing some of that talent, I guess, among of that talent, I guess, among the young people of Kingborough throughout other, throughout other events throughout the municipality? And the second part of that question is, would council consider employing young artists to entertain, to entertain? And to, the genesis of this question is that there's a couple of hundred people down at Kingston Park on a Saturday morning, for example. What kinds of things are we doing to activate the Kingston Park space with arts and culture and hopefully engaging the young talent that we have in the municipality?
Thank you. Before I hand over to Dr Fox, I'll just briefly mention that I totally agree. Kingborough's Got Talent was incredible and they were the group of young people that were chosen out of so many that auditioned. There could have been twice or three times as many who were on the program, but they had to select, I think it was 18 in total, to represent the municipality. Certainly it is something that I would like to see us repeat. I think it would be challenging for the staff to run it as an annual event because there was so much work involved in terms of doing auditions, not just here in Kingston, but you know, as far away as Woodbridge and then having rehearsals and then the production on the night. So I think probably every second year might be a more appropriate timeframe for the event, but I'm sure Dr Fox can assist with some further information in relation to Kingston Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was, you stole my thunder. I was going to say the same thing. So it was a fantastic event. It was very well run and the talent was phenomenal that we had here in Kingborough. I've had a good chat to the staff around it. We think every second year would probably be more viable than every year to enable the talent to get ready for the next event, but also in terms of the staff resources and time involved in setting it up. So we are looking at moving forward every second year. In terms of using some of the performers in other, other events and activities, that's certainly on our minds and we're looking out now for what we can start to engage those performers in. We are currently seeking expressions of interest from performers and contractors for council activities and events, trying to open that up to make sure we're giving equal opportunities to people in the community to have a go, particularly where there's payment involved. So we want to make sure that everyone has a chance to put their name forward and put their company name forward for those activities. In terms of activation of the Kingston Park space and around the hub, high on our priority list. Of course, we are limited in terms of the resources that we have, that we can spend on that, but that's the, the passion of the team over there, as you know. So happy to continue to look at opportunities there and to see how we can involve those young people in those opportunities.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. We have a number of cold water swimmers in our municipality and some of them approached me the other day and were just asking about hot showers. Apparently at Long Beach facilities, they have hot showers there and I was just wondering if we are aware of how they manage that, those hot showers and how much it might cost?
Everyone seems to be looking at Mr Reeve, who is reluctantly going to turn his microphone on and give us an informed answer.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, certainly nice when people do look at you. Look, I'm not sure off the top of my head that's the, that's the answer, but I'm happy to actually make contact with Hobart to see how they'd set that up. There's obviously a cost that goes with putting those types of facilities in and I guess it would be interesting to see whether it's, if you like, on the lower cost or the higher cost side as to whether or not we want to consider that as a, as a future type of project for Kingborough, but happy to chase that one up and I can provide that information back to all councillors.
Great, thank you. And I might add it to our new register.
Thank you. Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor. Council received quite a lot of feedback as part of the draft budget survey about the need for a better pedestrian crossing facilities in the centre of Margate. Just wonder if we can get some clarification about how the ownership of main roads such as this work, which parts are council responsibility, which is state government? And I think this one's particularly relevant given the, I believe the state government made an election commitment to install pedestrian crossing at Margate. So it'd be good to get an update of any discussions we've had with state government on this.
Mr Reeve.
Through you, Mayor. Look, it can get a little bit complicated with the state highways. So most of them that are actually in the built-out areas, which is the same as Margate, get governed by the Roads and Jetties Act, which basically says that council looks at the ends of it, if you like, so the foot, the curve back to the property boundary, both sides of the road. But we also take an interest in terms of pedestrian crossings as well at the same time. So there's a number of them we put in, for example, along Channel Highway in Toruna. Having said that, state growth has also put in some as well, including the lights at Toruna. So it's not completely clear exactly who gets involved, but we do actually have a fairly close relationship with state growth as regards these types of issues. So the one in Margate, we have been talking with state growth only recently as to what some potential options may be along that stretch of road. And obviously, you know, there's some consideration in next year's budget for some town planning exercise for Margate as well, which we'll pick up on this for that particular stretch of road. So yes, I think, I think there's, there's an area where we know we're likely to move to there to actually try and improve the pedestrian movements in that area.
Just one more if I can.
Councillor Bain.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had quite a few inquiries from Spring Farm and Whitewater Park residents about how things are progressing with one, the Spring Farm playground and also the two walking tracks that are included in this year's 22, 23 Capital Works budget. So just wondered if it was possible to get an update on those two projects.
Mr Reeve.
Through you, Mayor. I'll use my favourite word, they are imminent. So effectively for the one up near Caracolas Drive there, the design's completed on that and that will be tended very shortly, hopefully next week. The one which is a substantive one, which was handed back to the developer to council, will probably be tended at round about the same time. There's just a few design kinks to actually iron out of that one. And the playground, we finished the consultation and just need to finalise some design on that as well, which should also be tended probably very similar to those timeframe. So sometime in the next two to three weeks.
Thank you very much.
You actually gave us a firm timeframe. Mr Reeve, you're slipping. Councillor Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got the one question about the mayor's activities on page 47. On May, on May 3, you met with the General Manager and Minister Street regarding Burnie Island issues. So I'm just wondering if you couldn't perhaps give us an update on exactly what the issues you were, that you discussed and if there are any outcome of those?
Not this, Mr Street, Minister Street. Yes, that meeting was at the request of Minister Street, who had actually spent a day on Burnie Island in company with the Burnie Island Community Association representatives. Both himself and Liberal Member for Franklin, Dean Young, had spent quite a day on the island looking at various things. The couple of issues that they wanted to raise were in relation to, particularly, we had quite a lengthy discussion about the rubbish issues and overflowing rubbish bins and the impact of tourism on those. There was an agreement out of that that I would write to Minister Yench suggesting that it would be, given the unique nature of it, whilst, you know, obviously waste on Burnie Island is a council responsibility, given the unique nature of the impact of the tourism footprint on the island, that it was sort of something that would be ideal perhaps for a project for the new statewide waste authority to, to deal with. So I have written with that suggestion. I understand Minister Yench did get back to us fairly quickly to say that, you know, obviously it was up to the new waste board to decide how they spent the money, but that has been passed, passed along. We did have a couple of other discussions in relation to a couple of unsealed roads that residents would like to see sealed, where we've done some traffic counts recently and that data will be provided to just continue the discussion there. And we had some other discussions about at Alona retaining wall area where apparently there's a need for some steps down to the beach. I think that was about, yeah, the gist of them. Thank you. Councillor Midgley.
Thank you, Mayor. Also in your diary are the meeting on the 1st of May with Sujini Summari, multicultural issues in Kingborough, please.
Thank you. Yes, that was just a general catch-up. As you know, Sujini is very active within the Kingborough community and involved with the Multicultural Women's Council of Tasmania. So we meet regularly to talk about their activities. They had just, about six weeks before, had their International Women's Day event here. So we, we chatted about the success of that. We also talked about the fact that I share Sujini's passion for, at some time in the future, having, Kingborough being host to a large-scale multicultural festival. I think that would be a wonderful addition to the events that we have at the community hub and that's probably something that the forthcoming advisory group on the multicultural strategy might be able to consider as part of the, part of the mix. And we also talked about, about that and I did indicate to Sujini if she knew anybody that wanted to put their names forward because we're out with expressions of interest for that at the moment. Thank you. If there are no further questions, we will turn now to page 13, questions on notice from councillors. We had one from Councillor Midgley in relation to the new amenity block at Longley with an officer's response from Mr Reeve. There are no petitions still being actioned and at the time the agenda was compiled, there were no new petitions that had been received. We turn now to page 14 and the item I was just talking about, multicultural advisory group with a recommendation on page 15. Looking for a mover and a seconder. Now, let me just look because we don't actually have, we, we, we might move to discuss because there's nothing to actually move at the moment because it's blank, the recommendation is blank. So if I could have somebody do a procedural motion to move to discuss. Thank you, Councillor Midgley. Seconded councillor Antolli, all of those in favour to discuss? Against, motion is carried unanimously. So just to preface the remarks, as you'll be aware, this, this has come out of the, the motion put up at the annual general meeting and it's something that I've been particularly passionate about for some time, that we haven't done a lot, haven't had the capacity to do a lot within the multicultural space in Kingborough. And I think the best way to do that is to use the sort of model that we had used for the LGBTIQA plus strategy development, where we have a, an advisory group or a working group that joins together for the period of time to develop the strategy and then obviously the implementation of the strategy is then up to, to council staff. So we have gone out to expressions of interest from members of the community for their membership, but now we need a chair and a deputy chair to come from councillors. So I'm going to take them one by one. So for the position of chair, we need to indicate who would like to do that. I would like to put my hand up for chair, but I'm also calling for other nominations and we will go to a vote and then likewise with deputy chair. So I would like to be considered for the chair of that. Are there other nominations?
Mayor, I'm not nominating for any position, but as we're discussing this matter, when I read the report, I was confused about how long this committee is expected to last, whether it's six meetings or six months and whether there is a finite life to this committee.
It is certainly intended that there is a finite life to the, to the committee. We were basing this on the, as I mentioned, the LGBTIQA plus committee, which I think met half a dozen times over its lifespan. I think its life was four or five months. I can't remember around that. Yeah. Councillor Midgley is confirming that was about four or five months. So we don't have the resourcing capacity to have an ongoing advisory committee as we do have other advisory committees such as community safety and the access committee and/or bicycle advisory committee. So this is a different type of committee that whose sole purpose is to develop the strategy, which is then endorsed by council, implemented by council staff. So however long that takes, but I would hope that by the end of the year, that there is a strategy that we can endorse.
I have a further question.
Sure.
In the terms of reference over the page, I noticed that they're not consistent with other committees. A lot of the points, 4.8, 6.4, 6.5, 6.6 and 6.9 have been drawn from the, let's call it the Rainbow Committee. And I'm wondering if there's going to be a standard for these committees, whether all other committees are going to have similar terms of reference or whether this is something that will be ultimately come back to us in another form for us to actually accept or modify.
Dr Fox, would you like to assist with that? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for the question and you're correct. The multicultural advisory group terms of reference were based on the LGBTIQA plus working group. So they do have some extra clauses in there that weren't, that aren't currently included in the other committee terms of reference. As the mayor has said, this is very much a time-limited working group or advisory group to write that strategy as the LGBTIQA plus working group was to write the action plan. There's no reason that some of those clauses couldn't be included in terms of references for other committees, but that would of course be up to those other committees to consider those and whether they're appropriate to be included. It really was just a function of looking at those other terms of reference and then developing these up that those, those similar clauses have been included in both of those groups. And also because these are strategies that are around inclusion, so those clauses are about making sure that all voices are heard at the table, that those differing views are all, that those, those different views are put to the table and discussed and considered in a respectful way.
Councillor Midgley.
Thank you. Just a point to add to the terms of reference as well, through the LGBTIQA, that terms of reference is drafted and it went to the working group for any feedback and comment as well. So I'm positive that you probably take the same approach with that working group as well, that it will be put to that working group and people can have input and that sort of a thing. So I guess it's flexible in regards to exactly what the final thing is, but I guess this gives a really good overview and a context in regards to what it will be. And just further on, that a couple of years ago, the previous mayor, Dean Winter, and I had met with Sujini and, you know, looked with MCOT and that was going through a bit of fluctuation around their CEOs and things at the time. And I'm sure councillor Fox, who's been here a longer time than me, would know that multicultural conversations like this, you know, have been on the agenda for a long time for Kingborough. So it's really great that we have some space in the community services team to take this on and move it forward.
Thank you, Councillor Midgley. Any further discussion? How about some nominations? Does anybody else wish to put up their hands for chair? Because I don't want to dominate this. I'm quite happy for this to go to a vote. Okay. No further nominations for chair? Well, thank you. I would be very honoured to chair this. I'm very passionate about this and I hope to do it justice. So my name will be inserted there. Now we need a deputy chair. So could I have some nominations for deputy chair? So councillor Antolli, nominating yourself? Yep. And any other nominations? Councillor Dean, nominating yourself? Any other nominations? Okay, with two nominations, we will have to distribute the ballot papers, please. It'll be determined by secret ballot. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can we have a chat about why they want to, why the people, like why the councillors have nominated? I'd love to hear their pitch really.
Yes, before we vote. Yes, beg your pardon. Sorry, we're still in discussion, so we can, yes. I'll take it in alphabetical order. Councillor Antolli, if you'd like to give us a brief summation of what interests you in the role of deputy chair?
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Councillor Midgley. That's actually very gracious of you. It's good, that's good to know why you're voting. So I am a migrant. I don't believe I'm the only migrant on council. And I, while this has no great bearing, I have a personal relationship with Sujini and have actually supported her over the years at some of her functions and my family have volunteered a little bit of support and time and it's something I'm passionate about. So that's part of the reason why I'd like to nominate.
Thank you. Councillor Antolli, councillor Dean.
Thank you, councillor Midgley. Yeah, look, these strategies are really important. I'm glad that we've come alongside other councils and peak bodies in developing a strategy. So making progress in that space, which is really good. I guess it comes down to my firm belief that we as a community... I guess it comes down to my firm belief that we, as a community, are far better off when we are more inclusive, when we are more respectful of each other's backgrounds, and I personally just want to be very much part of that in Kingborough, because this isn't just about, it is about giving a voice to the culturally diverse community that we have, but it's actually about making Kingborough an entirely better place by being more inclusive, and this is a really good opportunity to make Kingborough as a whole far more, far better place for all of us to live in. So I'm very keen to be part of it as a deputy chair, and yeah, thank you to everyone for voting.
Thank you very much. Okay, so if you could fill out your ballot papers, please? Just for the information of people who are watching at home, we're just having a ballot to determine the council, council or representatives on the Multicultural Advisory Group that council is establishing, so we've just voted, and we just need to tally the votes to form a motion. Pipes destroyed. Do that as a separate motion. Okay, I'm advised that we have a draw. Can we have two deputy chairs? Let's have two deputy chairs. We did that with the sport and rec strategy. Councillors Dean and Antoli, are you happy with that? We're just basically increasing the membership by one, and it would be great to have both of you involved, if you're happy with that? Yep. Okay. So we've got a motion, so I'm going to move back into, into the formal part of the meeting, out of discussion, so that the motion is that councillor Reet be appointed as chair, and councillors Antoli and Dean be appointed as the two deputy chairs to the Multicultural Advisory Group. I have a mover in councillor Midgley and a seconder in councillor Bain. We need a C to the resolution, and that is that the ballot papers be destroyed. And so we're just going to add that to the, so we've got, yep. See, that's all right, we know what you mean, yep. So it's moved councillor Midgley, seconded councillor Bain. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Thank you. We move now to page 19, Disability Inclusion and Access Advisory Committee Diversity and Inclusion Statement with a Recommendation on page 20. I've got a mover in councillor Midgley and a seconder in councillor Cordova. Councillor Midgley.
Thank you, ma'am. I really don't have much to say, but I look forward to hearing from yourself in regards to this, because I understand you've been a big contributor and part of a team working on putting this together, so interested in what you have to say, and I think it's a really fantastic statement to include on the council website.
Thank you. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, ma'am. I think it's terrific. I read this, I thought it could go in any number of different ways, and when I read it, I just thought, really, it's hit the nail on the head. It's so well put together, it's so succinct, and it's also, it just, it, I think it really reaches and meets its aim. So I wonder if it's worth maybe, I hope that the mayor will read it out, because it really is very good, and I think it just sends the exact right message that we're living in a, we're living in a place that is welcoming, where all views are welcome, where people from all backgrounds and beliefs and abilities and genders and ages, that they have, they have rights and they are welcome, and we're doing our best as a council to include all those different perspectives and views. I just thought it's, in a world that is so full of animosity and at times aggression and exclusion, it's just so nice to see that councils are able to, are able to try and bridge those obstacles, and they're able to try and bring people together, rather than the culture of division, which I think is so pervasive throughout the media and throughout so many different elements of society. It hit the nail on the head, I thought, this diversity and inclusion statement, and I'm really proud that our council is yet again leading the way by trying to bring people on board and trying to bring people together. So more power to the group that created it. Congratulations, and I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cordova. Councillor Antoli.
Yes, I also am happy to support it as a, I have an immediate family member that is, comes under the classification of neurodivergent, and so it's, I think it's, it's, it's actually, that word alone is quite new, quite recent, and I think it's good that those people with those issues that they've been born with that are of no fault of theirs are included in this policy as well. I'm not 100% sure how we can help some of these people, but I'm sure if it's in the scope of the policy, we can come up with some creative ways.
Thank you councillor Antoli. Councillor, sorry, deputy mayor Gladred.
Thank you, yes. I'm a mother of a young child who is neurodivergent, and so I've been learning a lot about this topic in the last 18 months, and what's really struck me in my learnings is that just how many highly successful and proficient people there are in the world who are neurodiverse, but they do face a different set of challenges than people who are atypical. And as a council, and we deal with a lot of community members, and we employ a lot of people in the community as well, it's really important that we are aware of these different types of challenges that people may face, and so having a statement like this is, I think, really important, and I thank everyone involved.
Thank you. Just before we put it to a vote, yeah, the genesis of this was the Access Advisory Inclusion Committee, and we've had the great benefit of one member of that committee in particular, who has really highlighted for us over the last two years or so of their participation, about the fact that we tend to overlook the needs of the neurodiverse community, because they're not visually obvious to us, and the fact that we have one in every five people who fall into that neurodiverse category, which captures a lot of different, different conditions and ways in which the brain operates differently. It does mean for those people that customer service staff, for example, in dealing with them, need to perhaps tailor the way that they're speaking to adapt to their particular needs. And as part of the work, the subcommittee wanted to ensure that the training that our customer service staff gets is sufficient to ensure that they can identify somebody who may be neurodiverse, because not everybody likes to disclose that, and so they've been trained to look for visual cues or verbal cues that may assist in determining a better way to communicate with the person who's coming to ask something of them. And also though, to make sure that colleagues within the workplace, within council, understand that there is a whole different, lot of conditions that fall under this, and that somebody that they're working with may, you know, may need some quiet space, or may need, you know, to work from home occasionally, or any range of things, that they might need, might need to work slightly differently in order to produce the work that they do, and ensuring that they understand that. And so as part of the recommendations of the subcommittee, and we considered those, I think, a few meetings ago, there were, as well as this statement, we had sort of talked about with the staff, about the training that our own employees receive in their induction, but also encouraging anybody amongst the staff who does feel comfortable in disclosing that they are neurodiverse, that they do so, that they feel supported enough to do that, so that they can then be offered any range of adoptions to the way that they work in order to accommodate that, so that they can be the most productive. So it's been a really worthwhile exercise, and I'm very grateful to the members of the subcommittee, Dr Don Hampton, Dy Carter and David McQuillan, for the work that they've done on this, and I also thank Dr Fox and her staff for the work that they have done, so I'm really happy to endorse this initiative. So I will hand over to councillor Midgley to sum up.
Thank you, ma'am, and thanks so much for the background on how this came about, and all the other councillors for sharing personal experience and, I guess, lived experience, and also the importance of it. Is it all right, ma'am, if I read it out, just so it's on?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the statement, for those listening at home, is "Kingborough council strives to be the, to be, sorry, to be the model of an inclusive culture where diversity of thoughts and background is valued. We acknowledge, value and respect people of all cultures, sexualities, beliefs, abilities, genders and ages, and support their right of equal access, equity and participation. We believe diversity of thought and background, together with an inclusive work environment, are critical to support every person and team to excel. We want to enable innovation for continuous improvement of service delivery. We strive for an environment where people feel they belong, are valued and as an individual, and are respected with a shared sense of fairness." So it's really excellent that we have this, and I hope that we can share this perhaps at LGAT, and let other councils know that this is happening, because again, as councillor Cordova said, you know, we're perhaps leading the way in this, and it is a really important statement. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you councillor Midgley. I'll put the motion now, as moved by councillor Midgley and seconded by councillor Cordova. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Turn now to page 22, Expansion of Smoke-Free Areas with a Recommendation on page 25. Looking for a mover and a seconder. Mover in councillor Cordova, seconded councillor Fox. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, ma'am. The genesis of this, well, for a long time, the council has been moving towards reducing the harm caused by smoking in the community, but for a while now, we've been discussing around this council, what we can do in terms of public spaces and making them more comfortable for people and families and young people, athletes and others, everyone. So this is basically moving us to consultation. The Kingborough council doesn't currently have a strategic approach for the identification and declaration of smoke-free areas, but areas identified through internal discussions for potential declaration as smoke-free include Drew Point, which was informally declared prior to Tasmanian regulations with signee directed in 2009, Kingborough Sports Precinct, and that's what I've mentioned a number of times around this table, the Channel Highway, Kingston CBD and Hutchins Street. But it's, we're not at the stage yet where we can just start declaring places smoke-free, and the reason for that is you need community buy-in, and unless you have some kind of strategy for education and enforcement, then it's really, basically it's just some words on a piece of paper, it's not actually functional. So we're trying to make these functional for the community, and therefore we need to go to a community engagement process, and so the recommendation here is that we will approve to commence a community engagement process to identify priorities for council-owned areas to be declared smoke-free. I just wanted to point out that according to the legislation in the Public Health Act, vaping is included in the definition of smoking and a smoking product under the Public Health Act. This will all come out in the public consultation, but we need to basically bring the community on board with this, explain the benefits, explain how it will help, and also hear directly from the community about where are the most appropriate places for this to take place. So I commend the motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cordova. Any further contributions? Councillor Dean.
Yeah, I've just got a few questions. 5.2 of the report refers to an additional enforcement and education officer. Is this a permanent role or just a short-term one while we do the consultation and implement the new areas?
Dr Fox.
Through you, ma'am. There is no role at the moment. What we've said, or tried to say in the report is, the community consultation that we'll undertake will be undertaken with our existing resources, our environment health team and our communications and engagement team. Any additional requirement in terms of smoking education enforcement may require an additional resource, which we don't currently have budgeted for. That's part of the reason, as councillor Cordova mentioned, that we really need to go out and talk to our community about where they would see these smoke-free areas as priorities, because we're going to rely on a lot of community buy-in and self-regulation in this regard, if we don't have a specific person to go out and enforce and educate in those areas.
Councillor Dean.
I guess to follow up on that then, it makes it pretty clear in the report that we need to have that additional officer, and it sounds like that role will then be a permanent role, so it does sound to me like we're making a soft commitment in terms of expanding our operational budget. And we've been here before in terms of having motions put forward in terms of expanding our budget, and so I'm just wondering whether this shouldn't have gone the other way around in terms of potentially seeking approval for the additional staff member before going ahead with undertaking the consultation, so that we know that we're doing it properly, because it's pretty clear, and I completely get the report, that if we don't have that person, then we potentially have the capacity to do ourselves a disservice by rolling out smoke-free areas, which then don't necessarily get implemented as they should. So could, through you, ma'am, perhaps get an explanation as to why we've gone about it this way in terms of seeking soft approval, and then it looks like come next year, we will be kind of having to commit ourselves to a new staff member without having consideration of any other additional staff members?
Dr Fox.
Thank you for the question. It's a good point, a point well raised. The intention to even going out in consultation is to identify those areas that the community sees as a priority. We will then come back to council with those areas identified, and whether we believe those are areas that would be readily enforceable in terms of that smoke-free legislation. It's quite likely that if the community were to prioritise beaches and playgrounds and family areas, those areas would be much more readily enforced, self-enforced, self-regulating, because people generally don't smoke around children and families. As we've seen with Kingston Park and the Kingston Hub, it's quite well self-regulating in that regard. If the community prioritised areas that there were entrenched smoking habits already, that would be a more difficult proposition, because we'd be needing to move people on from those areas and to encourage them to smoke elsewhere, that would probably require an education enforcement officer. But at this stage, until we understand the community priorities through that community engagement process, we won't know which areas are priorities and what the enforcement or education requirement would be for each of those areas. So when we come back to council, if this is approved, and we go out to the community, we identify those areas, we'll also need to say how enforceable we think those smoke-free areas are within our existing resources. This is by no means intended to be a budget bid by another name, it really is trying to pick up on, or develop a strategic approach. So which areas can we implement, which might be self-regulating, which might be easy wins, if you like, and what might need to be a longer-term focus when resources become available?
Councillor Dean.
Yeah, thank you, that was an excellent response, and yeah, it is a fantastic idea and fully support going out and doing the consultation, and so I'm not going to be voting against or anything, I suppose, just on the procedural matter, it was good to have clarified moving forward what our kind of process is in this, so thank you for your answer.
Thank you councillor Dean. Councillor Antoli, you're right. Any further discussion? If not, councillor Cordova, did you want to sum up? Okay, I'm going to put the motion as printed in the agenda. Moved councillor Cordova, seconded councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Turn now to page 26, the appendices. It's just a motion that the appendices attached to the agenda be received and noted. There were three, and they were the My Diary, the Calendar and the Forward Agenda. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. Moved councillor Dean, seconded councillor Midgley. All those in favour? Oh, sorry, councillor Dean, question?
I'm just clarifying, because this does seem like a new thing to put in. Has this come about from the back of the previous council discussion around noting appendices at the back of things?
Yep. Yes, I think you raised, I think you raised it, so this just gives another opportunity for anyone to ask questions on those items if required. Yep. Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. We turn now to page 26, notices of motion. There were no notices of motion. Then also on page 26, confirmation of items to be dealt with in... to be dealt with in closed session in accordance with Regulation 15 of Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2015. Council by absolute majority moving to closed session to consider the following items. Confirmation of minutes, applications for leave of absence, local government association of Tasmania, 2023 elections, tender assessment AB 2302, Brown's Road Stage Two reconstruction, Bruni Island. What we're just considering all of Bruni Island. Just says Bruni Island. Current court matters and notice of motion, Channel Highway Business Owners compensation. So I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. Moved councillor Fox, seconded, deputy mayor Gladright. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. In accordance with the Kimberley council meetings' audio recordings guidelines policy, recording of the open session, the meeting will now cease. So thank you very much to everyone who's been with us for the past hour.